I'd like to call the order of the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 12, 2023. Tonight we'll have invocation by the Reverend Ryan Burris, pastor of Baptist Church, 729 Woodward Street, Reevesville. Pastor Burris?
Thank you, guys, for the privilege of being able to give the order on behalf of our city tonight. If you would join me as we pray. God, as we come before you, it is such a humbling and awe-inspiring privilege, Father God. We want to begin by acknowledging what you are, the blessed and only sovereign, the King of kings, the Lord of lords. Father, we thank you so much that we can approach your throne of grace, Lord, that we can seek your wisdom, Father God, of which you tell us to come and seek your wisdom, and you give to all without favor, Father God. We thank you so much, Lord, for your grace and your kindness that you've displayed to us through Christ Jesus, the Savior. Well, we pray, God, that you would guide every decision here, Father, tonight. We know that you are worthy of glory, Father. We pray that every discussion that's to be had, Father God, every decision that's to be made would be for your glory and yours alone, God. We pray, Lord, for your protection over our city, Father God. We thank you so much, Lord, for the opportunity to be in Reesville, Father God, and to call this our home, Lord God. We thank you for every resident. We thank you for every city official, God. We thank you for our mayor and every city councilman and woman, Father God. Well, we thank you for those who serve our community in so many ways, Father, and thank you for the great things that you are doing here, Lord. God, we ask your blessings over each and every person here tonight. We ask your blessings, Father God, over this meeting. We ask, Lord, that you would guide us, give us direction, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pastor Burris, please sit down on behalf of the council. Just wanted to thank you, Baptist Church, for hosting National Night Out on the parking lot at the church. It was absolutely fantastic. They really, really appreciate it and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We love our city. That's it.
Are you all right? Well, please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Proclamations and recognitions. Recognition of our chief, David L. Bracken, who retired June 30, 2023, with 35-plus years with the regional fire department. At his retirement social, I deemed him to be the man. Capital M, capital A, capital N, the man. To come forward. Be alone just to stand beside the chief. Certificate of appreciation. Whereas David L. Bracken began his career with the city of Reevesville on January 13, 1988, first hired as a firefighter with the regional fire department. Whereas three years later, he would advance quickly within the department, becoming a first lieutenant, and then fire captain before beginning being named fire chief in November of 1997. The position he held until his retirement in June of 2023. Whereas in addition to his duties as fire chief, David Bracken would use his strong skill as interim city manager in 2015, and also helped the city as interim public works director, because he was always willing to do what was best for the city of Reevesville. Whereas our chief David Bracken also exhibited unfailing character, integrity, honesty, compassion, and a sense of fair play, whether he was dealing with his firefighters, his coworkers, home management team, or residents of Reevesville. Now, therefore, I, Donald L. Gorham, on behalf of Regional City Council, take great pleasure in recognizing and honoring the capital M, capital A, capital N, David L. Bracken. On the occasion of his retirement from the regional fire department, and thank him for his dedication to the citizens of Reevesville for more than 35 years, and wish him and his family continued prosperity as he enjoys retirement and spending even more time pastoring his congregation at Jerusalem Baptist Church. And I think your wife might be getting together some honeydew stuff, because she might not have quite enough stuff to do. This is the 12th day of September, 2023. Donald L. Gorham, mayor of the city, I know the man's got something to say.
I always thank you for the support throughout the years. Certainly, you know, we've gone through a lot of periods of some challenging times, but I appreciate all the support and prayers and everything that y'all gave and provided to help us to be able to do our jobs efficiently. To the many citizens who, throughout the years, who were very supportive and always had kind things to say, I'm eternally grateful to many of you for all you've done and how you laid the foundation for me to be able to rise to the office of the fire chief, to the city manager that hired me. I think there were probably days that, I think we came to the city about the same year, and had enough confidence in me to offer me the job as fire chief. I bet he probably had days in which he wondered what have I done? But through it all, I'm eternally grateful for the opportunity. Many people I've worked with, Carolyn and HR, and just the many people that are on the management team now, thank you for your support. And I know the city's gonna, the best of what is gonna happen is ahead of the city. I really feel that. And I think you have an excellent team, you have excellent people that are in place, that you can make some real inroads in the years that lie ahead. And I want you to know that I'm still in the community, and if there's anything that I can do to help or support, all you gotta do is call. I wanted to fear, but if you need something, I told the fire chief, I'm still around, you know, in 35 years, I did learn something. So if you need anything, just let me know. My wife's here, my two sisters, and my brother-in-law did come, so. And I don't usually get, my sisters don't come out that much, so, but they're here. So we're thankful for that, and we're thankful for all your support throughout the years. And we're thankful for the fire department for listening to me, you know, that means a lot, because you can be chief over the department, and the people will at least listen to you. Certainly, we're thankful for that. And I think we've learned a lot from each other, and I think as a community, we've learned a lot from each other, and there's still a lot that we can do. So thank all, I don't want to talk too much, but thank all of you. Thank you so much.
We appreciate the work with you. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, Mary.
Chief, I like the way you were starting your retirement at the regional round football game.
That's a good thing.
Well, when the chief retired at his social, and the griffin would have said, "There are people that came all the way from Raleigh." And he's definitely important, because we got former city manager here, former HR director here, so that's just as good as somebody making a trip to Raleigh to me. David, this is something that's treasured by all the retired employees of the system. They go watch.
Thank you so much.
Okay, this is something special here. Does that look familiar to you?
It does.
Well, I've been told that this is the plaque that was on one of the first trucks that you helped the city maintain and even purchase.
Thank you so much.
Felt like this would be good for you to sit on that desk. Of course, you won't have a chance to look at it much, because you'll be doing a whole lot of hunting. I hope you enjoy that. Yeah. Oh, yeah. We have a craftsman in the building tonight also, in former city manager Kelly Alden.
Thank you.
Presented to the capital M, capital A, capital N, David L. Bracken, by the City Council of the City of Reevesville in honor of an appreciation for 35 years of exemplary leadership and service. This is the 12th day of September, 2023.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
David, you're welcome.
Thank you. I love your friendship. We've been together a long time, and you're truly gonna be missed, and I'm not gonna delay the appointment. Everybody knows who you are. M-A-N. I just want to tell you a little bit about that gift you got. I know you know the significance of it. I would have had the privilege to watch it being constructed and had the conversation with the constructor, and he referred to that as the labor of love. You've got something that's very priceless and something that you will enjoy, and your kids and your grandkids will hold very fondly with them. Kelly did a fabulous job, she does everything. This was the labor of love.
Thank you.
And five of them off.
Before you had to see. Chief is probably gonna be mad at it, but it was chiefs out there. Give you that plaque.
Thank you. I will be mad. I'm proud to have had a small part of it, but your career means so much to this city. I could never express to you my gratitude for what you've done and your leadership.
Well, thank you so much.
Again, again, that's why he's the capital. Yes.
You all know I'm old, and I get emotional, and I won't be able to get through disputes without tearing up, so just expect it. I'm sorry I didn't do this at your retirement, the 12th day, but I just, and I won't be able to do this here now. I want to give a little bit of a history lesson, because there's not many of us around that will remember Terry Will, Willie Will, and Chief Will.
We're old.
Y'all were real old when I got here. Look, just a little history lesson. You all know, David, you know what a special person you were. From my personal perspective, in the mid-'90s, Chief George Williamson retired, and I made two, four choices for subsequent fire chiefs. Or the choices were made with the right choices, I made the wrong choices. The people just didn't work out, that's what it was. But we were in a situation where the fire department had three chiefs in below three years when we had to let the program go. The fire department was in disarray. There was a great deal of disharmony. There were people jockeying for positions. People didn't think George Williamson was retired, they didn't think one person should have been hired, they thought somebody else should have been hired over that person. The community was upset about some of the things going on in the fire department. And it was a very tough time for the department. We were looking for a chief. I don't know if David woke up one morning when he was a kid and decided he wanted to be a fire chief. I don't know if he wanted to be a fireman or if he took the job or whatever, but David had been in the department for a long time, as you all know, and you can see another one of his accomplishments as being his first employee of the year, the fifth out in the hall. We were looking for a good man to be a fire chief. I have experience with David, as I said, and I talked to him about the job. Dave did more. He said he wasn't ready for it. He just, he didn't think he was ready for it. There were a lot of things going on. It was a, it was, the department was in turmoil, something you can remember that. I asked David, and he agreed. The man, just like you said, he does what he always did. He stepped up. And chief, and he never looked back. He smoothed the waters, he got people in behind him, a lot of power of his personality and respect that he carried. And the fire department, since that time to my knowledge, has been in its perfect shape. It took years, and it took a man like David Bracken to do it. He pulled my bacon out of the fire by making that happen, and I will be eternally grateful to you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate you.
One more time, as he goes to his seat, he's the. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Four items. See anyone feel the need to pull one of those for me? See none? We have a motion to pass the consent agenda. So moved, settled, and in discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. We have one public hearing. Consideration of a text amendment to amend Article 5, Section 4, Table of Area Yard Height Requirements to Reduce the Front Yard Setback Requirement for Single Units in Residential Agricultural 20, RA 20 zoning district, from 40 feet to 30 feet. This petition was submitted by Eric Stavas, T 2023-10, enclosure 1. A little big ol' city flag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
He's fast like Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, and thank you, city manager, Woodard. The city has been petitioned by Perry Stavas to amend Article 5, Section 4, Table of Area Yard Height Requirements, to reduce the front yard setback requirement for single units in residential agricultural 20, RA 20 zoning district, from 40 feet to 30 feet. Currently, the zoning ordinance requires a front yard setback of 40 feet for single units in RA 20. We recognize that the existing 40-foot front yard setbacks can create difficulties for some properties. Stavas has evaluated the front yard setback requirements for other municipalities around the area, and we have found the average front yard setback to be between 40 and 30 feet for 20,000 square foot lots. Therefore, Stavas views this request as reasonable. Where city right-of-way is present, the required front yard setback increases further since the front yard setback will begin after the point following the right-of-way. For example, in RA 20, if there's a 10-foot right-of-way from the curb extending onto the property, the required 40-foot front yard depth will begin where the right-of-way ends and effectively create a 40-foot front yard depth from the curb. There's a considerable need for new housing in Reevesville. The land development plan describes goal number three, the need for expanded housing. This text amendment aligns with goal number three by providing flexibility in development regulation and assistance in addressing the need for a more varied housing stock. There is also an ongoing movement at the national level of city planners to move away from large lot zoning with expensive setbacks. This amendment will aid in the expansion of the housing stock by relaxing the front yard setback requirement for single units in RA 20 and creating housing options that are attractive to both developers and residents. The planning staff does recommend the adoption of the proposed text amendment, and the planning board did recommend that the text amendment be approved. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing at 6:20. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Excuse me, in favor of what amendment?
In favor of the amendment just described. Yes. Anyone who'd like to speak against the amendment? All right, see none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:21. What's the favor of the council?
Mayor?
Yes.
I approve of the second amendment, T 2023-10, as proposed by the staff and approved by the council.
I second your motion.
All right, we'll get a motion in a second. In discussion. See none? Well, first, we'll close. We've already closed. Those in favor? Okay. Thank you. It was unanimous. Next, we have Main Street. Consideration of nomination for 2023 Main Street Champion, enclosure 2, Robin Young, Main Street and Market Square Manager.
Hello, good evening. As you see in the package, the regional advisory RDC Board of Directors would like council to please consider the nomination of Dave Darrell, owner of Cafe 99 in Cagito, as this year's GNC Main Street Champion Award. You all know Dave, we all love him. He's a staple in our community, and he's really what parts change our downtown. He's been in business since 1999, but more than that, he's also an investor in our community, in our downtown, owning several businesses. And in the last year, he's worked with me personally with some of those buildings, and we're putting a new business into our community, and they're thriving today, and give him all the credit for working with them. So again, he's been in business since 1999, and really has created a name for himself. People come here from all over just to visit him and shop in our downtown. So he's known and loved by so many across the community, and so that is our recommendation for this year's champion. Now, council does have the opportunity to make other nominations for the fours well, from the fours well, so, but this is our nomination, and, you know, if you could please consider, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
I'll throw in my two cents while we're thinking. Dave makes some mean chicken stuff, I'd say. Mean champagne chicken, too.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I don't think there's anything that we have ever asked of Dave that he didn't do wholeheartedly, 120%, and help us make suggestions to make the downtown Reesville better.
My own thought was, why haven't we done this a long time ago? Because he's been such an outstanding merchant, friend of the city, friend that everyone, he's a terrible vent, they forced in line to build that. I wholeheartedly respect and support this recommendation.
You have comments? What's the favor of the council?
I make a motion that we accept the RDC recommendations of Dave Darrell as our Main Street Champion.
In discussion. Those in favor? Amendments. Consideration of amendment to Chapter 5, Section 5, dash 252 of the City Code of Ordinances repealing two current provisions pertaining to mobile food vendor push cart. Enclosure 3. If you're all in it, I like flesh.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have an amendment to the City of Reevesville Code Ordinances, Chapter 5, Business Licenses, Taxes, and Regulations, Article 8, Mobile Food Vendors, Section 5-252, Mobile Food Vendor Push Cart. As you're aware, a few months ago, council codified the permitting requirements for mobile food vendors of the city code ordinances from the zoning ordinance. So we moved it from one book to the other. When we did that, mainly focused on amending the ones pertaining to food trucks, to make those more accommodating. Immediately, we focused mainly on those, less on the food, on the food push carts. Recently, we were made aware of two, let's call them dated provisions for push carts that were still in the code, so we wanted to revisit those. There's two items up for consideration to be repealed, which I feel that they should be in the development regulations and not in the code ordinances, which is the permitting requirement, the actual establishment of regulations for them that creates, or the permit for them to extend. And that's number one, that they're allowed on the sidewalks and central business districts. And number two, that limits their operations from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., except in the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts. That was a puzzling one, because we don't have the same regulations for food trucks. But I recommend that we revisit this with the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance that we're working on, and the regulations that we want for pertaining to light zoning and that sort of thing with that development ordinance instead of the city code. So we recommend that those two items are repealed, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? What's your favorite with Chapter 5, Section 5, dash 252, the City Code of Ordinances?
Mayor, I make the motion that we repeal those two items.
Second? In the discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. It's your turn. Thank you, Jason. Consideration of amendments to Chapter 10, Section 10-21, Available Water and Sewer Lines. Connection requirement for connection required of the city code ordinances to remove any potential conflicts with House Bill 628, enclosure 4, Manager Wood.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On July 10, 2023, Governor Roy Tubers signed House Bill 628 into law. This new law revised this general statute 160A-317A, which removes the city authority to force connections to water and sewer services in certain situations. Currently, our ordinance states that the owner of any proposed improvements on a subject property within the city limits and 300 linear feet from an existing water or sewer infrastructure must extend our system at their cost instead of being allowed to provide an onsite septic system. The revisions that are now reflected in House Bill 628 outline that the developer and homeowner will be allowed to provide an onsite septic system if the cost of installing an onsite septic system is less expensive than extension of our water and sewer service. Therefore, we, staff is requesting to reflect the changes in revision section 1021 to reflect the current bill, House Bill 628, to ensure we remove any potential conflicts with the recent law changes made by the state.
Any questions on the bench? Any questions on the bench? Council, what's your favor for amendment to chapter ten, section ten dash twenty-one, available water and sewer?
Motion to approve the revision, section ten, dash twenty-one.
Any discussion? Mayor? Yes.
I have a question about the rest of the company, down in the state office, but I've got a lot of concerns about this. I think we're going to be opening that up, and that's what I think we don't have to tell them, so. I don't think we have any torches except for food, but I think it sets a bad question. Once again, I think the state gives them something we should be, we should be grateful for, but I understand you need to do it, thank you.
Any other discussion? That's a good point, very good point. All those in favor? Council on Loans. Consideration of Project Piper Building Reuse Grant with City Commitment for five percent local contribution and accompanying resolution, Closure Five, Nancy Wood.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the economic development project that we've been discussing. This project is Project Piper, as we're aware, they're seeking to apply for a building reuse grant through the North Carolina Department of Commerce towards an expansion of its operations and the creation of ten new jobs. The City of Reevesville staff will take Project Piper to this city council meeting, as we have before tonight, for the approval of the application and to commit the required five percent local contribution, which is up to three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, in order for this project to be considered for funding. Therefore, we ask for council to approve the attached documents.
Any questions, Council?
I have a question. I'm not sure that I understand exactly what Project Piper is, can you explain that to us?
This is the economic development project with the old three-story reuse building that's going to be repurposed.
Any other questions? What's the favor of council? Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. What's your name? Consideration of North Carolina Department of Public Safety Grant for one hundred thousand dollars. Memorandum of Acceptance, Closure Six, Sherrell Williams, Information Technology.
Thank you, Council. Sherrell doesn't want to brag herself, so I'm going to come up here first, but Sherrell and Steve and Gilbert are to be committed tonight. Her team, before she got here, a former director, Robert Wheeler, as well, identified some best practices, some things that we could implement to make the city more secure, our computer system more secure, our daily lives more secure, and they continue looking into those things, and when I told her that it probably just wasn't going to fit into this year's budget, Sherrell wound up paying the money. So the Department of Public Safety has given us a state and local cybersecurity grant of a hundred thousand dollars, and so even, you know. I want Sherrell to answer any questions today.
I don't have no match for this question, is it, is it a match?
Uh, no, there's no match. That's right.
That deserves a double clap.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Warren, City Council, member of the city manager, good evening. I asked my team, Steve Eastwood and Gilbert, not to stand with me this evening, because even though I wrote it, we're the ones that are going to actually implement it, put it in place, and I think I have the best IT professional team in the state of North Carolina, so I thought it would be great, you know, to them to stand this evening. So this grant, as Chris shared, is an amount of a hundred thousand dollars, so we are excited about that, and with consideration that you guys accept it, it would help us to cover the cost of the Office three sixty-five, which would make us more secure while also adding more functionality and productivity and collaboration to our daily operation. Additionally, more ability to access information from anywhere, and accessing data, and also sharing information easier with our partners. So more grant opportunities are coming forth within December, and I'm looking forward to writing some more grants, so we just.
They need to vote for acceptance, and there's already been a lot of acceptance that's not a lot of questions.
I got a question. Please, congratulations, I haven't said that, but having said that, I'm probably the least pet, saddest person on this council, in fact, I'm really sure of that, but tell me exactly how you spent a hundred thousand dollars, it seems like a small amount, because I think what's going on around the country, where a city devastates North Carolina by being acting different, something I may not understand, but just give me some way, how I think I can feel better about it.
Okay, that's a great question, and thank you, and so that is one of the reasons that we voted to make sure that the City of Reevesville is monitoring as far as cybersecurity.
As far as city of North Carolina, as far as city of North Carolina, to put out a good initiative.
Yeah, and so we're looking forward to implementing cybersecurity, meaning training for all employees, making sure that our infrastructure is improved and upgraded to the spec of the cybersecurity, making sure that we have more secure infrastructure, for example, MFA, that's multi-factor authentication, so that's more secure access other than passwords, and so that's going to secure us, the actors, make it more difficult for them to be able to access our network. Also, with being able to have our Office three sixty-five in the cloud, that eliminate on-prem, meaning on the front computer of a server, so we're able to have it in the cloud and access it in case there's a disaster, we can access our data.
Is there a notification, do we have some way to make sure we're notified and put back? Does this system include some way of quick notification?
It does, and we currently get that today, so you'd be surprised how many notifications we get where actors are trying to access our network, but I feel, again, that my team, we're doing a great job by not being hacked, and you know, we're protected with virus protection and all of that, so we're doing a good job.
I think you're in the presence, should be committed for this action, probably a little later, but we got it.
Thank you.
All right, do it. Mayor, you weigh a lot, and certainly you do have a lot to take, because Mr. Gilbert, that I'm going to lose my attention, we have to go over and over and over again, so you did a great job, much appreciated.
Any questions? Do we have any restrictions on how we use that money?
Yes, so, and I can get a copy of the grant to you, but the restrictions of the scope of work, how I wrote the grant, and it's specifically for cybersecurity and Office three sixty-five, and so we have to apply the grant to the scope of work, how the grant is written.
Do you have a specific amount of time that you have to do that with?
Yes, it's up to three years, however, we're hoping to do that more quickly, so I can, we can apply again December, so we can get one, so we have the command of money to get one, but for up to three years, we have to send it.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening. I have a question I'd like to ask Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, people are always taking photographs of us, but I'm going to put the shoe on the other foot, and if you don't mind, could you get your team a little closer? I want to get your picture. Anyone who goes out and gets a hundred thousand dollars, I need to record this, so, one, two, three. Thank you.
I would do that if I knew how to use the telephone.
Are there any other questions? What's your favor on the memorandum of acceptance, by council? To who?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, consideration of amended offer and acceptance for a state revolving loan five million one hundred eighty thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars for the wastewater treatment plant part, Hit Works Replacement Project, corresponding resolution and capital project ordinance amendment. Closure seven, Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager, Administration, Finance Director.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This may be a little bit of deja vu, I was here last month, it was the exact same thing in, believe it or not, the information the state provided was not accurate last month, so I think maybe the day after we met, or two days after we met, we got a letter saying that the amount was different. So we need to come back a little bit to the drawing board, come back to you guys. Some of the documents is just to pick up the one forty-four, five eighty-two, there's a budget ordinance, amendment, capital project ordinance amendment, to pick up that difference, and it's going to be additional proceeds, it's going to go straight to contingency line if we all funded the full construction price in the last month. But the real thing is the resolution that we have to submit to the state, and the resolution has the correct amount now of five million one eighty, six eighty-two, five million one eighty, six eighty-two, is the amount that was approved by the local government initiative, which is a hundred forty-four thousand dollars different than the piece of paper they gave us last month from the state.
What's the next thing?
Well, we borrow more money, but, and again, you know, if we don't spend a little project, when the project's finished, the black is the one, and the white is the rest, but it'll be there if we need it, and of course, you all know how projects are today, a change order can eat up a five million dollar project, we could easily get a change order, so it won't make the project run through the rules as far as.
And so that's the difference happening?
Uh, no, the Hit Works is at, I think, point one eight percent.
What's my view?
Pretty light.
Any questions? The only thing we have to vote on is the resolution.
A resolution, and then there's a.
An amendment, too?
Yes, sir, there's a, there's a capital project ordinance amendment to pick up that difference, the project side.
So we've got two votes. What's your favor for the resolution? Make it be approved. Motion on the second, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, capital project ordinance amendment, who's the vote?
I make the motion that we approve, Mayor.
Motion on the second, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Projects, consideration of, consideration to proceed with rebidding of wastewater treatment plant BNR project, Closure eight, Manager Wood.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, this is one project we've been discussing at length. This is the wastewater treatment plant bio, excuse me, biological material removal, otherwise shorten the BNR project. On March ninth, twenty twenty-three, city staff, along with our engineering firm, the Phil Associates, opened facilities for this project. The lowest bid price was provided at eight million six hundred and twenty thousand one hundred dollars, which was substantially more than the funding secured at the time. Since then, we've confirmed with the original funding agency that an additional five million is available for the same rate and same terms. This additional funding provides us up to eight million nine hundred and sixty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars in zero interest loans, and a five hundred thousand in brand from the Golden League for the back of alls. City staff still believes, even if the previous bid amount, this is a very important project for the future and economic growth for the City of Reevesville. Therefore, city staff is requesting for city council to consider to let us allow to proceed with rebidding the BNR project as designed, and staff is also requesting that once the bid is obtained and the appropriate loan application is submitted to the LGC, that the City of Reevesville likely needs to accept additional funding amount of five million dollars at the zero interest and twenty-year terms to finance the project.
Any questions, other members? Council, what's your favor of the rebidding of the wastewater treatment plant BNR project? Got a motion on the second, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand.
We've put so much time and effort into it already, we can't stop now.
Consideration of recommendations to give the city manager authority to sign change order, change order for rural ready site utilities project, Closure nine, Manager Wood, you're working, you put it out.
That's one of your four man, Council. Thank you so much, this one I'm very excited about, this is the rural ready site utilities, and this is the project that's been on the line on diesel drive. Since April of twenty twenty-three, city staff, along with our engineering firm, Withers Drive, have been diligently working with Prime Cooley, a representative of Triangle Grading and Paving, to understand the floorboard out of this project. We have finally come to terms with what we are with the project, and Mr. Cooley has now provided all the necessary backup documentation requested by the city to revise the original change order. After much discussion and deliberation, Triangle Grading and Paving has executed memorandum of understanding on August thirty-first. Therefore, tonight, we're asking, based on these recent events, the next step to move this project forward is to execute the change order. Therefore, our recommendation is, if city council would so graciously give the city manager the authority to sign the change order in the amount of five hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars and six hundred and five days to the contract time, the additional six hundred and five days were calculated due to pipe material delays and the need to complete it with work.
Any questions, other members?
So if you sign this change order, I understand this additional work will begin immediately?
It should, yes, ma'am.
And six hundred and five days is about how long it will take to finish it?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Council, what's your favor on the rebidding of the wastewater treatment? The city manager's authority to sign change order, with a rural ready site. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Board and commission appointments. Closure two. Yeah, now we reached the public comments section. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for council?
Of course.
This matter. Would you give your name, address, please?
Yes. My name is Vanessa Wilson. I live at four oh three Sprinkle Street here in Beesville. I lived here most of my life. I spent some time in Kansas, out west too, so. I want to address all views of city council. I'm an advocate for Sprinkle Street. One of the issues that I wanted to speak of, I know I only have a few minutes. The city of Reesville has just made a revote, beautiful at the curving. We have one problem at the curving at the intersection of Sprinkle Street and Steel Street. The curve that you turn in, you either gonna run up on the hump because the cars that are stopped at the stoplight is too close. And I didn't know how you go about to do it. When I get there at that stoplight, I try to stop or call lift back to give the other people that's turning in their curving enough room to make their curving without hitting the side hump to start a car. You can actually hurt your car like that. I know I always talk about, but I'm really an advocate for Sprinkle Street. The city of Reesville is beautiful. I love Beesville, and I love the people that's here. And down on Sprinkle Street, on the west end of Sprinkle Street, we have cars parking on the sidewalk. People do a lot of walking. I'm a walker myself. I walk all over Beesville. You may have seen it, others may have not seen it. But when the cars are parked on the sidewalk, that means I'm gonna have to get in the street. And other people are walking, they'll have to get in the street, and they may be hit by a vehicle that's coming down through there. So I didn't know how you go about, they had been posted, no parking on the sidewalk. How do you go about to do that? And that, those are my main concerns as far as Sprinkle Street on the west end, that big gully just standing there. They cut down all the trees. And it's a dangerous situation because when the buses are traveling down through there and people are driving down through that area, a vehicle could go over in that gully. And I was wondering, could the city of Reesville vote on having a railing put down through there to keep the accidents from happening before accidents do happen? Those are my concerns.
Mayor and Council, if I may, and we will certainly thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I can definitely call up on all three, especially with the curving and the gully issue with our health works department. Our health work director is out this week, so if you can just get with me or the staff, we can get your number. I can give you a call as soon as you get back in. And then I can also speak with our police department in reference to signage enforcement in reference to the parking on the sidewalk.
All right. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you.
Yes.
So that's what just recognized to you. So anyone else who'd like to speak for council? All right, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Got a few updates. I'll try to be brief, but a couple things that we, each of you and our citizens would like to be aware of. In reference to personnel, our economic development director, Serge McWilliams, and his firm have posted the job application for this position. This positioning is, position is being advertised on the firm's website, city website, LinkedIn, and various economic development websites. I included in your packet under the miscellaneous tab, if you'd like to see the description and the application for this job ad. In reference to some projects and city updates, the SESC West Centennial celebrations for this month of September, our celebration included open house at the Reesville Water Treatment Plant this past Saturday. Also, we had our nine eleven memorial service yesterday, which was very well done. Appreciate all that attended that service. This Saturday, we'll have art in the afternoon at the penthouse, Saturday and Sunday. I believe Saturday is ten to five, and Sunday is one to five. And then also, on September twenty-third, seven P M., our summer concert series will be at Market Square and featured music by the band Not Fiction, which is the nineties music. So those are some of our events for this upcoming month for our SESC West Centennial. Couple updates on the J C Park tennis courts. We are currently finishing the final piece of the grant that includes engineering drainage report. And Mr. Cloud did just inform me since we finally got the rain, we haven't been successful to go out there and get those reports and just submitted that today to the sixth. So more to come with that update. In reference to pickleball, we have purchased a storage box with portable net and reversible striping for tennis court, four and eight, to allow for an additional pickleball playing area. These are the two courts on the left as you're basing the tennis courts with baseball fields behind you. They're the first way from the parking lot. We've also informed the regular pickleball players about what we've done. We've asked and how can we assist in making the pickleball more convenient and ways to improve that in our area. Also, we're really happy to announce that our family board application has been approved. And our human resources director will be here at our October. City council meeting to give you an update on that, but we were approved, so we're very excited. Also, in reference to sister cities, the committee has met and gone over the application. They've answered all questions on that application. Are reviewing the completed document to make the changes. Our city marketing plan to smith the application to the sister cities international will reach this past week of August twenty-eighth. Splash pad, a couple other larger project updates. Underground electrical and plumbing is complete for the two buildings. Both the water and sewer taps are complete from the project. CMU's blocking is progressing on the bathroom facility along with plumbing and electrical roughens. Elsewhere was delayed mobilizing to the job site and finally arrived from Georgia on August the fourteenth. Over the next couple of weeks, they will complete the necessary underground piping and embedding before forming the concrete slab. CMU blocking will also proceed on the second building once Elsewhere is plumbed out to mechanical room. We attached photos under the miscellaneous tab to show the progress of the splash pad, and we still are on schedule. Penthouse Building Project, electrical plumbing and mechanical roughens are nearly complete with exception of a recent change order request for a Cameron and AB pathway. Once everything is inspected and approved, the contractor will begin to inflate and sheet rock all interior walls. Smoke screen partitions and some miscellaneous walls have been initially plumbed with drywall. Online discussions about the E I S continue to lay the exterior from progressing forward. The porch columns are complete and supports are currently being framed down. Our HVAC equipment project lead time has shortened by one week, which continues to be the longest lead time and likely the final item to be completed within November, so we're still on task there. Also, the Lawsonville Avenue School Project, we're still waiting to know and working with our attorneys to divide the property. They've received a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Royal Transformation. We've also gotten endorsement of the county manager to be one of the projects for the golden leaf initiative in the amount of three hundred thousand. This is a year-long progress process for this ring. Chris and Judy did meet on August twenty-eighth with P T R C to discuss this project, and P T R C thinks this project could fall by for additional money. If so, this would be an application for five hundred thousand, and we will know more as we move forward with this application. Couple more updates. Our lunch and learn event will be next week. It's Tuesday, September the nineteenth, and the fire department, regional fire department station will host us. Our topic for our employees will be benefits in retirement, and all employees are invited and encouraged to attend. And it'll be from twelve to one P M. We'll provide you lunch. We're also excited through our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, R C C, and Rockingham County. In reference to our three-part series, which is Place Your Bet on Reesville, which is incurring economic growth in our city. The third event will be Wednesday, September twentieth, from five to eight P M. I would remind everyone that this is a free event. Please just get with us to register. Go online and register. You can sit on our city website, on the chamber's website. We just really need a head count if you all are going to attend. It will be from five to eight P M. next Wednesday at the Reesville Event Center. This event will be a networking event for property owners, business owners, and foundational institutions. So please just let us know if you'd like to attend. If for some reason you forget to let us know, please, we encourage you to come anyways because we'd love to have you participate. Two final fun projects that we're working on, fall decorations. The city of Reesville started planning for our twenty twenty-three downtown fall decoration photo displays. We're hoping to have all decorations up by September twenty-ninth. And we're also very excited that our Battle of the Cuff is back for the second event. Looking for other teams to bring the trophy home for the next month. Health Works currently has it. The next event will be Thursday, September twenty-first, from two to four P M. at the Upper J C Park. And I believe Mayor Morris and Councilmember Walker have agreed to be our wrestling referees as we participate in kickball.
Strike three.
So Mayor and Council, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilmember of the force. The appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor. I've only got one thing that is on. So thank you, John, the city council members, and the city manager, and city clerk, everybody's prayers that we're up for. We've been a lot of assistance. You may like me. Thank you so much. It's good to be back with you.
Councilwoman Walter Day.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Oh, I, I am a few. I attended, I'm looking, on September the first, I attended the, I mean, I'm sorry, August the first, I attended the unveiling of the landmark case, Greed versus Stupower, which was a, they unveiled and went on that civil rights trail. On August the second, there was a building ceremony in Beesville at the Pinnus Kitchen Biologist. And August the third, I attended a special city council meeting and then the economic development meeting. August the eighth, participated in a Beesville advising R G C meeting. August the eighth, also attended the city council meeting. August the seventeenth, I turned, attended a pro session meeting with the city council. On August the twenty-third, I attended the Beesville Chamber meeting. And August the twenty-fifth, a two-on-two meeting with the mayor and the city council. On the September the ninth, attended the Black Family Day Celebration downtown. And I also would like to thank the mayor and the city council for supporting me during the wilderness of my husband.
You're so great. Councilwoman Day, today is the beginning of the championship.
Yeah, so we're so very thankful. Good evening. I hope everybody is doing well. We're gonna go really quickly because it's messy outside. I don't want to keep us here any longer. We do have a few upcoming events. I'm very excited to announce that Leadership Rocket Town kicking off tomorrow. Tomorrow's our first session, the first in a month. But I know Mr. Ray will join us. I'm so excited, along with, I think, three other city employees. So we've got seventeen participants. We've got a great year planned. And I know that when it comes time for Reesville Day, we will shine proudly. And Miss Lee is gonna help me plan that. So thankful for that and appreciate everybody who's always supported that. Some are going to talk about the franchise event. I too just want to say very, very important to register. We do need you to be registered to attend that event. Also, our Reesville Chamber of Commerce Business Expo and Job Fair is coming up on Thursday, October the twenty-sixth. This year's theme is Treat Yourself to New Opportunities. Very excited about Halloween theme sponsored by Traffic Day. I'm honestly blown away. I had about twenty forms in just like a couple of days. Like they are throwing in the door. Have a feeling it's gonna be a very large event. Very excited about it. It is a Reesville Christian church this year. They have been so wonderful to work with. And so we are, we are pumped about that. There, there are about like ten rubrics coming. I am going to copy these and email them and make sure that you all get them. Lots of stuff happening. I am not gonna go over all of them, but you have them in front of you amongst them. We're about three more scheduled today. So I'm gonna email this angel and make sure that you all get them. The ones of really notable interest, there are two coming up with the school system. There is the career exploration class at Reesville Middle School on the twentieth and on the twenty-seventh at Booker T. Washington Marine Center. There, Spark and Sea Lab. And so that one is not on there because that got planned today. There are multiple others, so just lots of completely great stuff happening. We're so excited. Just done Jersey Mike's, along with several others. So there's some really cool things happening. The biggest one too, that you will probably have come to you between now and next meeting is gonna be a new urgent here on Broadway Drive. Some of you are probably aware that they opened yesterday, so they are planning to do that as well. And you'll see that we have four new members, Kelsey Denoveri, Beta Fueling System, Scotty Springer, Cleaner World, and Storm Real Estate. So we are hovering at about four hundred and forty members or so. So we're very, very thankful. I was talking to the, made a gentleman who's the director. She was just saying how there just seems to be so much energy. Like this all three chambers, we just keep talking to people, new people coming out of the woodwork. And so it's really cool. And I think this is the event that we're being, that's what it is. Partnerships and things, so. Thank you, Walter.
I have one question.
Yes, of course.
Scotty Springer, Cleaner World, what is kind of business that has another?
The hook, it is a dry cleaner. They have been, it's easy. They have, but they have branched out, and so I grew up using them as my service. They're a wonderful, family-owned business, been around for a long time. They have branched out into like uniforms and supplies. So their biggest competitors are like Universe and some of the other, yeah. So they're doing things like the rugs and the mats and the uniforms and all that.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things that I did this month. I had a lot of medical appointments, so I wasn't as active as I wanted to be. But the first thing was I attended the meeting for our sister cities, applicating. And that's very exciting, and I look forward to that. I think that's a great opportunity for us. Secondly, on September the first, boo hoo breakfast at Southland Elementary School for the kindergarten parents, you know, kind of boo hoo. We had tissues and sausage biscuits and coffee and donuts for them because that was a sad, might have been a sad moment for some parents and maybe very happy moment for others, but that was a great experience. And then the other thing was the soft opening for Lucky City Brewery. It was a fantastic event. It was just so awesome about how many people we had attend. The line was out the door, and I mean, from the bar all the way out to the patio for three and a half hours. It was a wonderful event, and we hope to keep it up. That's such a great asset to downtown Reesville and the name Lucky City Brewery. That's such a great asset to downtown Reesville and the name Lucky City Brewery. We need to make sure it stays over for, that's why I'm here.
Councilwoman Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd hate to start off on a sad note, but we have lost several very well-known figures in Reesville lately. I'm gonna speak of one and I know one of my councilmembers will speak of the other as we go down the line. But Mr. Bobby Sullis passed away last week. He was a coach, mostly elementary at Woodwork Elementary, but he also coached baseball and wrestling for Rockingham High. He was one of those gentlemen dealing with teenagers is how I met him. He changed some new lives with young men and some women too. He was not matter-of-fact and in-your-face because most of you have children, no, you cannot do that to 12, 14, 18-year-old. But he gave words of wisdom and usually had a joke that I probably couldn't repeat here, but it made the students fall in love with him. He would do anything from emptying the trash to wash windows to do your passes or whatever. My condolences go out to his family, Abe, Jacob, and his loving wife, Alice. On a happier note, I'd like to let you know that one of our most active community watch, Ann Ruston is having a yard sale this weekend. The last count, I think I had 23 homes in that area that are having lemonade stands, yard sales, whatever. But they are very, very active on our national night out and at our police station with the community watch. So Vanessa, I could not get your last name. Is it Williams? Wilson? That might be, you can come to one of those community watch and see how, what they do. And then maybe we can get Sprinkle Street on that area too because they are really well organized. They've got, you know, they do that IT stuff that James and I don't do as much and they're really, really active. So, and Mayor, I had 12 events that I attend, but due to the time I've been the most for the floor. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. On August 15th, I attended the Rockingham County LWSCP Zoom meeting. And then August the 3rd, the special city council meeting. August 17th, I also applied for the Rockingham County Board of Elections. August 26th, attended the, participated in the Southend School Ground War. Give quarterback students to go back to school at that time. And then August 16th, also I attended the Elder Road Visioner Baptist Church Men's Rest. Then September the 9th, attended the 27th Annual Black Family Day, Martha Square. Enjoyed the after dance, the food trucks, virgins event. And also just a shout out to Demster Vaughn there, where he gave space for myself and council, when we all were in council, I was using that to have words to the public at large. It was very nice.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week I had the opportunity to attend the funeral of a lady that Dudd Island. Friends of almost everyone in town. I consider him to be my mentor, a dear friend, and just so many attributes that I don't feel adequate to even attempt to vest many contributions he made to the life of the city. I lived early on, I was a young police officer in the mid-sixties. We were dealing with civil unrest and Klan marches. Judge Jerry's leadership, he was on the council before he became mayor. He was the one most active and he was working with everybody to try to keep calm and peace. He was a gentle soul. He was a gentle giant in my opinion. But like I say, I'm not adequate to tell you all the things he does. Great father, great man, mayor, mentor to so many. I would say extraordinary ambassador to the city. Judge's legacy will live on forever. We were truly blessed with his leadership. I was honored and mayor, I was admitted to other people on council that too. But this is what I've been apologizing. We were able to attend the funeral for this bad service. Just unfortunate, but you know, one thing I'll just say quickly about Dudd. Dudd, Dudd, lost his sight many, many years ago, but he never lost his optimism for the city. He had so upset back, lost his wife, many, many, and lost his son, so, so many things. He talked to Dudd, he goes at a cheer about, he came and went to you. He said, I'm too blessed to be depressed, and that was his whole thing, ladies and gentlemen. I know that we'll all miss him in the city, we'll ever be grateful for his leadership. The second thing is, if you think I'm repeating something I said last year, exactly right. Last year at this council meeting, I made a comment about how proud we were and someone from Maple High School, someone who grew up in the town made outstanding contributions in business, agriculture, health, or wherever, whatever field they chose to do. But this way, this way, going back to saying the same thing. It's almost unheard of for someone to be named employee of the year in alcohol, tobacco, firearm business, United States Department of Defense, which we know as ATF. But once again, I own Mr. Harrison's son has achieved an award, which is almost unheard of in the ATF. I knew Captain White, I was never really surprised that he was successful. But he was, I know that you're proud of, you know that all of us in the law enforcement community are extremely proud of the contribution he made, that we look forward to the many contributions that we will make in this world. Just outstanding honor, and as I said earlier, I think I've never done it. It's almost unheard of for the ATF to honor somebody two years ago. They chose to do it and they picked the right person to do it. So please let the police know how fortunate, how pleased I am to know you all and your contribution. And finally, finally, I'll come into garden there. I have a friend who has the opportunity to teach you in the U.S. Here we go, I believe, so let's go ahead here. And this friend told me, she said, I'm not a bit surprised. I knew he was successful. Actually, I also said, you know, white person, outstanding parent, she never had the opportunity to do it. Please let him know and we all know, but I am, as a law enforcement officer, to give to you that much thing.
Well, thank you, and I'll be very grateful. I have to say this, I'm gonna be with you at the point, I'm gonna spot you now. It wasn't you, Chief, and I appreciate you. I just appreciate law enforcement, love this city. Thank you for those kind words.
It comes to heart. Not ever, but it comes to heart.
I'm not gonna give everything that I attended since last council meeting, but I give a few highlights. I did attend Rockingham with friends, sisters too. And then I attended the Reesville versus Western Rockingham elements in the 18th office. Concert at the, at Market Square, ribbon cutting at Jersey Mike's. Fried the steak and cheese, it's delicious. Had a Zoom meeting with a young lady, Ms. Lynn, she's a graduate student. And she wanted to have some information on the role of the mayor. I gave her my perspective of that. I too was at the Men's Day Breakfast at Elder Road. It was a very interesting church safety meeting at the Reesville Baptist Church on August 26th. And attended the manager of mayor's dinner at Woodwork. And of course, I was at the 9/11 service of First Amendment. And I think the saddest thing for me in this particular situation was for this particular month was the funeral that I attended at Mayor House. James gave some very touching words about his situation. He was jovial with his situation also. He had lost his sight. And they said that when he come over to visit him, he said, good to see you. And he took it with very good humor. And I think they also mentioned that you might feel like he would need you to pray for him, but he was praying for you. He was a special man. I didn't know him, but I got a chance to know him next year. That's my report.
The announcement for the performance.
All of them were geniuses for the new Reesville Housing Authority, Jacob, Michael, Susan, for the Parent Commission, Carlton Johnson, for the historic preservation commission, Margery Holt and Anne Marie Simmons, and for the Human Relations Commission, Richard Ratliff, and then the Planned Board Thomas Topp.
I thank those people for being volunteers for the city. If there be nothing else, we'll adjourn. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Oh, it would be faster than that. Any discussion, those that favor, raise your hand. Thank you all for coming out tonight.